Okay, everybody, it's five o'clock. We welcome everybody to our monthly McDowell County Department of Commissioners meeting. Thank you for being here, and we always begin our meeting with a prayer and a pledge. So I ask everyone to please stand at this moment, and we'll have Mr. Chris House do some pledge, and Commissioner Targaryen will pray.
Father, we thank you for this day, and we thank you, Father, most of all, for saving our soul. And, Father, we ask you, God, just to be with us now as we go into this meeting, and pray, God, that all will be done, and everything that's said and done here tonight, Father, that would all be done by me. Thank you for all you've done, Father, and for all you've done to do. Amen.
Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may you see. Ladies and gentlemen, at this time, we have the minutes for us. You've got our time to review them, and read them, ask questions. What's the pleasure of the board?
Say.
Okay. All of you say aye. Most carries, we have the agenda tonight for you. What's the pleasure of the board, or any additions or additions to the agenda?
Except to as presented.
Say.
All of you say aye. Okay, so we have the first aye on our appointment schedule. We have the distinct honor of recognizing a retiree. We've got our sheriff tonight, so Sheriff, if you don't mind, sir, come up to the podium, and we'll turn the interview at this time.
I appreciate it. Good afternoon, good evening to all of you. Appreciate you allowing me to speak for a few minutes and brag on one of our guys who is retiring, coming up on his retirement. Lieutenant David Marler with the sheriff's office will be retiring at the end of this month after a great distinguished career with McDowell County Sheriff's Office. Let me start off by saying that Lieutenant Marler completed basic law enforcement training at Isothermal Community College October of 1994. Shortly thereafter, came to the McDowell County Sheriff's Office from Collins and Aitman in Old Fort and was hired as a part-time deputy for a whopping $8.28 an hour. December of 1995, Dave Marler transitioned into a full-time deputy position. During his time, he served as a patrol deputy, later promoting to a shift lieutenant with the sheriff's office on patrol. He served for years on our SWAT team as both tactical operator and a sniper for the SWAT team. Most recently, Lieutenant Marler transferred to support division as a lieutenant, focusing on courthouse security and our transportation efforts. In reviewing his file, I noticed several commendations in his file. I wanted to mention a couple of them that I thought jumped out at me, and that was in 1999. He was recognized as the Old Fort Ruatan Deputy Sheriff of the Year in 1999. In 2008, January of 2008, there's a commendation in there from then Sheriff Dudley Green for his heroic actions and acts of bravery during a tragic shooting incident in Nebo, North Carolina. I'd like to say that Dave and I have been friends for a very long time, and I can distinctly remember when Dave told me that he had put his application in at the sheriff's office, and he was actually waiting and hoping to get a call from then Sheriff Jackie Turner about a job. And I've had the pleasure to work alongside Dave for the majority of my career, and I had a front row seat to observing his unwavering dedication and valor. During a law enforcement career, many individuals will work for different local agencies or state agency. It seems rare anymore to find someone that completes their entire law enforcement career at one spot. And that's why and what we're honoring tonight with you all is Lieutenant Dave Marler doing his entire career and completing his career all with McDowell County Sheriff's Office. He has served McDowell County Sheriff's Office and the people of McDowell County with selfless dedication and honor. And I'm asking you all to please join me in saying to Lieutenant Marler and his family who has sacrificed as well, thank you and job well done. Please join me. And I'd like to present him with our certificate of appreciation to Lieutenant Dave Marler in recognition and gratitude for your 30 years of dedicated service to the citizens of McDowell County and for your unwavering commitment to the McDowell County Sheriff's Office. You're a friend, you're a brother, always will be, and I thank you, and I appreciate you. I noticed some of your families here. I wondered if you'd like to introduce who you've got with you.
I've got my daughter Caroline, and my wife Rebecca, and my son Logan.
We appreciate you.
My brother Alan.
Appreciate y'all being here. Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. David, I see you. I hear the courthouse a lot, and I see you up there all the time. One thing about David, when I hear the courthouse, I always, he's always there and always has a smile on his face, ready to assist people. And David, the sheriff said, for you spending your entire career with the sheriff's department, amazing. And I honestly say this, we appreciate all of law enforcement. We acknowledge your service to this community. You've been faithful, you've stood the test of time, you've been counted on by your fellow officers, and we don't take lightly what law enforcement does to protect and serve the people of McDowell. We feel that we've got the best in state, in the nation, right here, sir. And it's an honor to have you in the board tonight, to recognize your service and to see you receive your firearm and badge. And whatever privilege it is to know you, I want to say that. We didn't have long conversations because in the courthouse, everybody's just like, ordinary, 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 whatever, right? But you've always been a person and kind and willing to help everybody, and I will say that I appreciate you on a personal level and on a professional level. I really do. And your family, to your wife and daughter and brother, you know, it's like a team member here, family. When you get called out, and we understand that, and you have time away from the family. So we appreciate y'all standing behind David and supporting him in his career as an officer for the government, Sheriff Department. And we acknowledge you and your family tonight, too, David. Thanks again. Mr. Sharon Brown, anything you want to add?
No, I think it's really scary, but I'm glad to be here. I would like to say, and I appreciate you too. Thank you a lot to David and my family, and I appreciate the sacrifice that you and your family have all made in order to keep this county safer and help us wish better than I know that the Sheriff's Department, the government, and the state, and protect us. I appreciate all of you, and I thank all the Sheriff's Department, all the ones that are part of the Sheriff's Department. I appreciate each and every one of you, especially you today for your service of you.
I just appreciate being able to serve the citizens of McDowell County.
I'd just like to say, I'm sitting here listening to the commendations and stuff, it's not all of them comfortable to let the standard that we personally set for the rest of these guys. There's people in this room that helped my family, that helped my sons when they got in trouble back in the day, and I do feel comfortable that our Sheriff's Department works together, and it's your service, your length of service, starting out at $8 a hour, is meaningful. And I just, I don't know how to say thank you for your service, but I would say thank you for your service and the level of service that you set.
Thank you very much.
Respect. Congratulations on your retirement. I just want to say, like the other commissioners have, thank you for your service and dedication, your sacrifice, and your life long service in McDowell and to the citizens, and I appreciate everything you've done, and your family for their sacrifice as well.
And I appreciate the sheriff, you came to here today, and I appreciate all these guys. David, you look around the room, you see a lot of officers we've been supporting, and I'm sure they want to be here, they think on their own retired. Ricky's sitting right here, been doing a lot of the officer had come in here, said, I'm going to be here, my whole partner out here, and so he's here today. And Freddie Coates has said he wants to say one thing too, so just approach him.
I want to come up and, of course, I've trained both David and Lieutenant Chris. And to work with him from a different point of view, from the other side of the table, David was professional, David was courteous, he did not exaggerate what his evidence was. You could take to the bank, this one and this one, what they told you that happened, and that's what you want in a law enforcement officer. And then David got to come to the courthouse, and I was glad to see him do that, treats people courteous, kind, can, I feel safe when I go in there. So, and I just want to say one more thing. I haven't seen this many law enforcement people since Charles Queen was going bust a steel.
I wonder if I asked him which side of the bus he was on. Why, the sheriff, you know, you that one thing?
We're good. I'd like to see if you guys want to jump in a photo.
We would love to.
Do the resolution.
Okay, what's the resolution?
We will adopt the resolution.
You got discussion on there, say aye. The votes outside.
Go on, come on. Becca, your family, come on.
This is the, okay. I thought we just did votes. I think we're next to it. Y'all standing right there.
You grab there with your, uh, diaper. You're sweating.
One, two, three. One, two, three. Okay.
All right, one more. Somebody pants, somebody make a smile.
Really?
Thank you.
Congratulations. You enjoyed your time. Got that shit. Is that all right? Okay, the sheriff said that, well, the department had to leave after that, and we understand, and y'all are busy, and we really appreciate all you do, so I thank for being here. Let's go to the next side on our table. This is the McDowell Beautiful Update. Mr. Matt, Mr. Matt, if you'd like to answer, try to make sure we bring your first.
Thank you. I'm Matt Bernison, and I coordinate the Keep McDowell Beautiful program. And I like to start by thanking and recognizing the board, because I'm a county employee, and our neighboring counties and surrounding counties, not everybody has a Keep America Beautiful affiliate that's fully funded and supported by the county. It's something that we have in McDowell, they don't have in Burke, they don't have in Rutherford, they don't even have over in Asheville. You guys are awesome, and your support, to be able to have a program like mine, to go out into the schools and talk to kids, not just about littering, but about community and school garden, about recycling, and when I'm out and about in the community, most everybody knows me as the worm guy. So you either know me for asking you to pick up trash, or you know me because I've got worms, and they're composting worms, it's not something I'm going to spread to you, so you don't have to worry about that. But I go out and I talk to the kids, and we work with our hands, and when we're in the school garden, we're not just talking about guarding, we're learning about life's lessons and how to work as a team and all of that good stuff, but we're also learning appreciation of nature. And so kids are learning to be less likely to litter, because they're learning to enjoy nature and enjoy it for what it is. But the Keep McDowell Beautiful program's been around since the 1980s. It's a really awesome program that I was able to inherit. I've been working with the program for McDowell County for about seven and a half years, and under my leadership, we've been a nationally award-winning program. In 2023, we received Keep America Beautiful's President Circle Award, which is reserved for their highest Keep America Beautiful affiliates that meet all their goals and all their requirements. And because of our hard work in 2023, we were selected for their grant for 2024 for the Keep America Beautiful, Great American Cleanup Grant. And Keep America Beautiful doesn't like to send you money, they like to send you stuff. But the stuff is stuff that I would have spent money on anyway, so they sent us trash grabbers, they sent us bags, they sent us gloves, they sent us orange vests, and all of that stuff will be valued at about $1,750, because they have national organizations that they work with, they're able to bulk buy and get that stuff at a lower rate, and so it just works out for everybody. But what that means for me is that's budget money that I don't have to spend on the stuff that I was going to go out and buy anyway. So those are the sort of grants that we like to receive. In 2022, we had 117 volunteers. That's 117 individuals that picked up trash and reported and let me know that they pick up trash. There's more people out there that participated in our program, lots more in our community gardens and our voluntary agriculture district and other stuff that we do. These are just people that we taught and trained and went out and picked up trash with us. They completed 390 hours, that's $11,681 in community service just in picking up trash on our roadsides, our creeks and streams, and our lake cleanup. And that was 2022. We were able to grow that in 2023 to 172 volunteers, 532 hours, equivalent of $15,933 that people gave back in community service just through picking up trash. But that stuff doesn't happen just out of nowhere, it happens through community partnerships, working with groups and organizations in our community and outside our community to bring them in to participate in cleanup events. I started working with YMCA Alternative Spring Break Program back in 2019. We partner with YMCA Blue Ridge Assembly, and they have folks come throughout the southeast. A lot of the kids that are in college that sign up for the Alternative Spring Break Programs are international students, because they don't go home on spring break, they're kind of stuck on campus for that week of spring break. So they sign up to go stay at the YMCA Blue Ridge Assembly, do some of the tourist stuff over in Asheville, but then they come and they give back and spend a day volunteering in the community. So we get them to come and pick up trash. I try to take them up in the national forest and in different places that are beautiful, but unfortunately have trash. So in 2019 was the first year we did it, and we have had kids from NCA and T, NC State, Coastal Carolina, University of Wisconsin, Milwaukee, and Columbus State come, and actually, that was the year that we were doing, redoing the Catawba River Park over on Old Greenlee Road. So in the one day cleanup over there, the kids from NC State pulled 1,100 pounds of trash off that site before they started dropping trees in order to renovate that park and bring it back to what it is today, a beautiful place for people to go and play horseshoes and hang out with their families and enjoy the greenway. And so a lot of the stuff that we do goes on behind the scenes and goes on ahead of bigger projects and other stuff going on to get ready for it and to prep for it. This year, our kids from NC State went and they did a cleanup on Armstrong Creek. And if you guys know where the fish hatchery is on Armstrong Creek, the first hole down from the fish hatchery is always loaded with trout, because it's the closest one to fish hatchery, right? But it's always loaded with trash because of that same reason. And people come from all over the southeast to come and fish here in McDowell, because we have an awesome place to come and fish, and we actually have the fish hatchery right here, so there's always a ton of fish. So they went up there and they cleaned up trash out of there, and I was just up there this last weekend, because I love to fish, and there was still no trash there. And two weeks later, like still being zero trash from them doing that cleanup is huge. They had, how many kids? A dozen kids. They pulled 10 bags of trash, three box springs, a big pipe, a television, and a speed limit sign out of the creek that day. And that was just about a dozen college kids spending a couple hours there cleaning up and picking up. So it really makes a big difference, because folks tend to litter less in places that are already clean. So because it was already cleaned up ahead of the first and opening day of drought, we're there two, three weeks later after the opening day, and it's still cleaned up and we're still able to enjoy it. And so that's really a big success for me. But our successes come from partnerships with groups like that, with the McDowell Trails Association. They're one of our biggest partners, and the last cleanup we did with them, we actually did with a Boy Scout troop, and it was over on Peavine, and they had a dozen youth, four adults, pull six bags of trash in four hours. And I couldn't believe that there were six bags of trash over there on the Peavine Trail. I mean, you go over there and you walk it, and you see a little bit of stuff here and there, but those kids get back in there and they dig and they explore and they really find everything, and they get excited about it. And what I love working with our youth in these programs is I get a ton of pictures. Whenever the kids go out and stuff and do the cleanups, they send me pictures, and so we get to brag about it and really get to pass that stuff on. There's actually two Boy Scout troops that I've got supplies out to right now, one that meets in town and one that meets over in PG. We get cleanups with the Girl Scouts every year, and one of our volunteers, Brandy Hunt, that keeps coming back, is actually legally blind. But she's such an awesome leader, we want to make sure that we can accommodate them and meet our volunteers where they're at, wherever, whether they, whatever level of assistance they need. We provide trash grabbers, we provide bags, we provide gloves, we provide safety signs and all the safety training, so that way, no matter what skills or talents or whatever our volunteers have or need, we're able to be there and support them and help them with what they need. So if they need me out there to be there, I'll be out there and with them, but I've been working with Brandy and her Girl Scouts and her Boy Scouts and different troops for, well, I've been here seven and a half years, so every bit is seven years. So she's one of my good volunteers that's trained, so if I can't be there that day, I know that they're going to run an awesome event and do a great job. There's another Girl Scout group in Pleasant Gardens that we work with. The Marion East Community Forum is a huge group that we work with. I do my best to attend the community forum meetings, not just to network with them, but to network with other groups in the area and to find out what's going on, because when you go to the community forum meetings, you hear about other issues and other things that are going on in the community. So we partner with them and all of their partner organizations, so West Marion Community Forum, the Men of McDowell. We just had a cleanup with the People on the Move, which is one of the African-American-led groups in Old Fort on May 13th. I said Men of McDowell, but I'm going to say it again, because Randall Conley does such an awesome job with them over there, that we've done three cleanups with them in the last two years, and they don't do cleanups just in West Marion, they do cleanups over in Old Fort with us as well. And that's before we even start talking about the lake cleanup. The lake cleanup is the main part of my job, that's why I'm here, is to coordinate that back behind the scenes, to make it easy for volunteers to say yes, to be able to participate in the lake cleanup. When I first started here, we did it once a year, it was always the first Saturday in May, and that's the way the event had been going on since the 80s. The folks from the Moose Lodge had partnered with the folks at the prison, and they would put the inmates on the boats in order to go out and pick up trash in and around the lake. Problem happened when COVID happened, and we lost prison guards and lost inmates, so we don't have any inmates down at our minimum security unit anymore, so I haven't had inmates for three or four years. But we've doubled our efforts. Instead of having the inmates come and go out with the lake, with the volunteers on the lake, we just recruited more folks around the lake to be able to do the cleanup. And we've grown the cleanup from having it once a year, the first Saturday in May, to having it twice a year, we do the first Saturday in May, and then we partner with the Catawba River Keeper on their Catawba River Sweep the first Saturday in October. And so the Catawba River Keeper supplies, gives supplies to organizations every lakes from here to the ocean, and then all sorts of creeks and streams and different stuff all on the same day. So we host a site on Lake James for that event, so that way, when stuff happens, like this year, we got completely rained out for the first Saturday in May. I was there all day with the dumpster, and just nobody brought me trash, because it was raining and it was crappy, and you know, people just didn't participate. But because we do that, we've got a built-in backup rain date, and we get the support of the Catawba River Keeper and all their television commercials and everything promoting it from here down to Charlotte. So we get people that come and participate in our lake cleanup because they love Lake James, not because they live in McDowell County, because they come from all over to participate in the cleanup. So it's really about growing our partnerships and getting our footprint beyond just McDowell County in order to get volunteers to come and participate, because we get tourists from beyond McDowell County, we get people that love our lake and love our trails and love our creeks and streams from everywhere, so we want to reach out and reach those volunteers and bring them in as well. So in 2023, we had 3,460 pounds of trash and 34 tires removed from the lake. And when we do our lake cleanup, it's at the lake. Over in Burke County, when they do the lake cleanup, they get a whole bunch of kids come to the state park, and it's coordinated by volunteers, but they mainly do road cleanups. They get a whole lot of volume of trash, because they're picking up the roadways with kids, and I've gone and I've participated in that event a number of years. We send our volunteers over for their lake cleanup, and then they send their volunteers over for our lake cleanup. That's why we don't do it on the same day. We've talked about doing it on the same day, but we try to do it on different days. But when we do our lake cleanup, we're providing tarps and we're providing supplies to our boats ahead of time, the whole week ahead of the event, and then they're going out and picking up trash and then bringing it to us on Saturday. So all the trash is actually from around the lake, it's not just roadside trash. So it's not really fair to compare apples to apples as far as the amount of weight that we're getting, because you do get a ton of trash, unfortunately, when we do our roadside cleanups, but we do our roadside cleanups as a completely separate thing. So that's our lake cleanup. We also do our Adopt a Street cleanup. So I modeled our Adopt a Street program on the North Carolina Department of Transportation's Adopt a Highway program. So in the city of Marion, all of the streets are either owned and operated by the city or they're operated by the state. And so all the roads that were in the city that were operated by the state could be adopted by the Adopt a Highway program, but all the other roads weren't eligible to be adopted. So I partnered with the city of Marion to be able to make all of those eligible to be adopted. We've got a website, and we've got a map, and you can go on, just like the state's program, and click on a road in the city and see whether it's adoptable or not, and sign up to adopt those streets. So far, we just had the City of Rotary Club adopt a road over by Eastfield, we have Missionary Alliance Church, the McDowell Democratic Party does cleanups every year, Edward Jones Financial has adopted a street in Marion, and so has the McDowell Board of Realtors. The McDowell Board of Realtors, I know, does a couple of cleanups every year, because they always come to pick up their supplies, and they do a really good job. And so what we do is we try to identify programs that are like ours or similar to ours in other communities, take those ideas, and then see how that they can fit here, and see what we can do in order to grow and expand on those ideas. So out in the county, we mainly support our Adopt a Highway program. A lot of folks want to pick up sections of road, and they're not comfortable adopting that, and so I'll provide them trash bags, grabbers, and gloves and stuff, and help them coordinate trash pickup, even if they don't want to sign up for the Adopt a Highway program. But I refer a lot of different groups and organizations to the Adopt a Highway program in order to maximize our cleanup supplies. So when the NCDOT does a cleanup, they'll give you these awesome big orange bags, they'll give you gloves and they'll give you vests, but they don't give you grabbers. So I try to fill in the gaps, and I give our volunteers the trash grabbers out of our budget to be able to go out and clean those up. And I don't always get all the numbers back from the groups that do the Adopt a Highway program, but I know that we're making an impact, because a lot of my partner organizations, like the Lake James Environmental Association, has adopted sections of roads under the NCDOT's program. So they're going out and they're doing cleanups, and they're not even letting me know they're doing them, because the states come in, they're picking up their bags, and they're coordinating that. But we do that in order to help stretch our budget and make all the roads get cleaned up. Appalachian Remedies is another one that's over in the Cross Mill neighborhood that I've referred to, and the Friendship Home has adopted one, and they did a cleanup not that long ago with a number of volunteers over on the east side on Yancey Road. And so these are groups that have called me looking to adopt highways and adopt sections of road, and the roads that they're wanting to adopt just aren't in the city of Marion or aren't going to be eligible for one of our other programs, so we connect them with the NCDOT to be able to partner with it and do those sort of programs. In the seven years that I've been here, we've had a ton of different groups and organizations do cleanups, and some of them come and go. Unfortunately, Kitzbo is one of the ones that have moved on, but we did some awesome cleanup events over in Old Fort, where we partnered with Kitzbo, and it was mainly their employees. Hillman Beer would give volunteers a beer ticket afterwards for them to hang out. Camp Greer and the G5 Trail Collective would send volunteers over. When they weren't out building trails, they would come and they'd pick up trash with us, and we did a bunch of different cleanups with them. The Old Fort Ruatan Club was an awesome partner and still is an awesome partner when we're wanting to do cleanup south of Old Fort, because they'll let us meet in their parking lot and use their bathrooms, and then we'll go and do cleanups there on Old Fort Sugar Hill Road and Bat Cave Road down there south of Old Fork, over by where the dumps at and stuff, and get all that trash. Because unfortunately, when folks are driving down the road, they don't always have tarps over the back of their pickup trucks and stuff, and so not all trash is thrown out the window or thrown on the side of the road, some of it's blown on the side of the road, too, so we try to do cleanups in and around those areas. And so those have been some awesome partners of ours, including the Old Fort Chamber of Commerce, but that was back when it was its own thing, when Kim Affler and Jerome and them were running it before she got hired to be director of the County Chamber of Commerce. them were running it before she got hired to be Director of the County Chamber of Commerce. So some of these partnerships go way back, because I've been here six, seven years, that we've grown our partnerships to be able to have bigger events and stuff down the road. So that's our main key to what I've got going on, is being out and about in the community, connecting with people and developing partnerships. Because I don't have an army of volunteers that says, hey, I'm a member of Keep McDowell Beautiful. What I've got is I've got 30 or 40 folks that are connected to groups of volunteers that we go out and we connect with and do cleanups every year. And that's really where our success has been driven, has been connecting with groups like the Lake James Environmental Association, the Moose Lodge, the State Park and other groups like that to really be effective and, and get things done. So I can't say enough good things about McDowell County, because we have a program like this, because you guys choose to fund a program like this where neighboring counties where they have just as big of a trash problem as we do, but frankly, they're not doing anything about it and you guys are, so thank you.
Man, I'll say one thing, sure, I love your energy, man. You're just like an energizer, a bunny ready to go, you know what I mean? So you said a lot in a short amount of time and we do appreciate Keep McDowell Beautiful and, and the priority that you place on cleanup, beautification. Commissioner Brown brings up a lot of times litter in our meetings and Patrick's done it and Chris has. So we appreciate the emphasis that you have and the specific goal of removing trash from our roadways, from our lakes and from our streams. So the only thing I can say is we need to coordinate more you with other groups, get other volunteers, to get more trash picked up. So comments, questions for me?
You know, Barry McPeters would be good to, he'd be a good advocate to contact to help him out with that.
Well, character measure.
Yeah, Barry's all about that kind of stuff and, you know, he loves working with scouts and that kind of thing.
True, and be contacted, Barry McPeters. Okay. All right, any comments, questions? There being none, Matt, thank you so much and keep up the good work and thanks for your seven years of hard work and dedication, we appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. That's with our next item on our appointment schedule, and this is our library's strategic plan. We have our library director, Mr. Marlon Brickley with us. Marlon, good to see you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
And glad to have you in the boardroom and the floor is yours.
Thank you, I appreciate y'all's time and as you mentioned, tonight I am presenting the library's proposed strategic plan and I think I even have, I'm already on board. So I don't know if y'all recall from our January meeting, the library, at the start of this fiscal year, we started the process of creating a new strategic plan. And we did this for several reasons. One, to be better stewards of taxpayer money, to be more efficient with our time and our resources, and also to make sure our efforts are more impactful in the community. And as a part of this process, we conducted over 30 one-on-one interviews with community stakeholders, collected over 400 surveys, hosted nine focus group sessions, and some of these focus groups included educators, business owners and community organizations like Freedom Life Ministries. And finally, we hosted a day-long retreat that included staff from all levels, our trustees, our friends group and other community members. And we're also fortunate to get grant funding from the state library to hire consultants, a group called Rethinking Libraries. And they were an enormous help in creating the surveys, leading the focus groups and pulling together all this data that we collected. And once this was done, we used that information to build our overall strategic plan. So the first part of all this process was to create a new mission, vision and value statement. And for us, we wanted to use the mission statement to let people know who we are, what we're about and why we do what we do. And so we chose engaging communities by providing access to resources and opportunities for learning, growth and connection. And then we created our vision, which is a, meant to be our goal for the future, and that's to be welcoming all to a destination for learning, inspiration and enjoyment. And then we created our value statement, which we created these values or selected these values to check against. So as we're looking at new programs, resources or partnerships, we want to make sure that they're community-centered, inviting, focused on learning, responsive and accessible to everybody. And so the goal with all these statements is to show that the library isn't just passively waiting for people to show up or participating in the community and bringing resources to them. And we also want people always feel welcome and feel confident that we can help when they ask for it. And finally, we want our work to reflect in understanding and respect for our community. So to put all these statements and responses to surveys and focus groups into action, we created these four goals, which are meant to guide our efforts over the next five years. So let's see, on the next slide, each of the goals are, a little bit more in depth is given about each one, let's see if this, there we go. So this is meant to give an overview of the different types of activities and outcomes we'd like to see from all this. And start off with improve access and usability through programming, resources and outreach. And an example of this would be a program that we plan to offer soon, thanks to your support, our Books by Mail program, where we're delivering books directly to people who are homebound with the help of the United States Postal Service and they'll all be done for free. We also have a lot of digital resources, like an enormous amount, and so not a lot of people use them, and so we're looking at ways to reduce those barriers, make it easier to use and easier to access. Next, align the library's facilities to the community needs. And essentially, we're just, we want to make sure that we're using the space we have efficiently. An example would be while we, our computers are still used quite a bit, people are also bringing in their own devices, so we're looking at creating a space for them as well. And then next, we have expand community awareness and engagement with the library. I think we found that people were pretty surprised by the library's resources mentioned in the survey, and so natural takeaway from that is, how do we get the word out more about all the resources that the library offers, that the county offers? And so we're going to try to take some time and look into that. And we also want to continue the conversation that we started with all these people in the community with this planning process. Then finally, we have increased investment and support for staff to ensure libraries' viability. Our library staff are the most valuable resource that we offer and they're the foundation of the services that we provide. So by investing in them, it allows us to follow through on all these other goals and activities and programs that we want to offer the community. So that's in a nutshell, our strategic plan, and so our hope is tonight that you'll vote to accept it. And if you do, our next step is to create a 12-month detailed plan. And part of that plan is to create measurable goals so that we can always make sure that we're being successful or if we need to, you know, change course in some way. And the idea is to do this 12-month plan every year so that we build on the plan before it. So I appreciate your time. Do y'all have any questions?
Well, Marlon, I read every word in your report, the plan, and after I got done reading it, I said, it's a pretty solid plan. I like it.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
So. Discussion.
Yes. When you get the 12-month plan, I'd like to see what that, that is as well, because I, I see this more as the vision and the mission and the strategic goals, but then the specific short-term goals, I'd like to, I think we need to see that as well.
Yeah, absolutely.
Appreciate that.
Sure.
Okay, any other discussion? There being none, all in favor, the motion's aye. Any close last time? Okay. Thank you, Marlon. Tell you in your set, we appreciate their hard work and keep up the good work, my friend.
All right, thank you, sir.
Well, let's go to old business now, item A, water project updates. Mr. Wooton, go ahead and say it, sir.
Thank you. Under our water item, I've spoken almost exclusively about our NIVO work for the last two or three years. And if you drive around the community, you're going to see active construction, which we like to see, of course. You'll see water lines going in the ground. Noticed last week on, I believe, Old Number 10 was the, the work I saw, but what we're calling Phase 1 is almost done. There's a few more roads to do. Believe Wildlife Road might be the last road they're going to work on and then they'll be, they'll be through with that, that particular phase. Hoppy Tom Hollow, you might remember, we received a grant for that work a couple of years ago. Mr. Silver and then Mr. Sani, who was here, wrote that grant for us. That kickoff meeting is Wednesday, so that one has been a long time coming as well. And again, Hoppy Tom Hollow is off of US 70, off an existing line. NIVO Phase 2, so coming back westward towards Marion, so where Old Number 10 turns into Memorial Park Road, just primarily that. There's a few other small segments that has been advertised and the bid opening will be in this room in about 15 days. And that is going to be split into Phase 2A and B, but for these purposes, we'll call it Phase 2. And then East End, which is around the Marion Lake Club area, that's still underway. I've asked for an update to find out how close we are to bidding on that one, but just a quick aside, our engineer, I speak to them probably once or twice a week about any number of these projects. They have probably several other clients they're working with. The feedback everyone is getting is that just because of the sheer amount of projects that are going on, everything in Raleigh is just moving like molasses and it's not because of anyone, you know, holding anything up unnecessarily, there's just a lot of projects to go through and review. So I've spoken with the folks in Raleigh at least once or twice to try to move some of our projects and Phase 2 was one of those where there was just a piece of paper sitting on someone's desk and it just needed a little bit of a push. So we're, we're pushing on all of those. Ex-90 Harmony Grove Road around Boyd Road and Burma Road East is about to start design with that engineer. And then not our project per se, but the developer of the Mountain Springs subdivision right off 70, Mr. McLaughlin, he has received authorization to start on that water line. So there's a part you committed to, to do the bore underneath US 70, that's being scheduled with the contractor, but Mr. McLaughlin is authorized to do that work and I believe will do so very soon. Then the other area, the Providence area around West Marion Elementary, we are underway with engineering solicitation, May 31st is that deadline. So at the June meeting, we should have hopefully a recommendation for you at that point. So no action at this time, just update.
Okay, listen, you got seven projects ongoing, starting, wrapping up. I think that's very important to, to help develop the water source, the resource in NIVO and provide water to those people. I think it's outstanding that a small county has seven projects going on. Very, very good. And we're meeting needs by doing that.
Yes, sir.
So the next item on our agenda under old business, this is the broadband update. Mr. Wooton, go ahead, sir.
Yes, sir. For many months, it felt like, maybe like the last one, which was full of updates. And in the water, you've got, you see pipe going in the ground and we are paying contractors and engineers, so you understand that work. For broadband, it's different, even with the financial commitment you've made, there's work happening that we're not directly responsible for and/or contracted. And so we are receiving updates about the great grant activity that Spectrum is doing, but it's, it's incremental, like on a quarterly report, and we know work is happening, but we don't know it as closely as the water, but it is happening. And again, the commitment they've made is to have their Rural Digital Opportunity Fund projects and their great projects completed by the end of 2025. So that's work already planned and or underway. I've also talked about the completing Access to Broadband CAB program for really over a year, almost two years. This is a program that the state has developed, it has been underdeveloped for pretty much that two-year timeframe. The idea with this one is for the state, the companies and the providers and the counties to be partners. And so remember that partnership. So where great was the, the company and the county perhaps, CAB is definitely the county, definitely the state and definitely the company. So you authorized some time ago to allow $900,000 to be expended from American Rescue Plan Act funds. That was communicated with the state many months ago. Little bit different again, the state has done an advertisement on this grant, so we don't have to. So they put that out, advertised it. We're in essentially a quiet period right now. So what I can tell you is that by the end of this month, there should be a firm selected. I cannot tell you how many firms responded, who they are or where they're proposed to serve. I'm not allowed to do that until the end of the month, but the way the process is developed is since it does have state money and county, state and county staff will review the proposals. There are more than one, I just gave that away. And we will score those based on a long set of criteria that's, say, is established and then turn that in and again, by June 1st, there should be a firm selected. So very hopeful that'll go well, but it's looking really good. And so after CAB, there's more opportunities, but this would end our available funding under ARPA.
So remind us, Ashley, the, Mr. Wooton, the board appropriated a million dollars, which leveraged $9 million, is that correct?
That's right.
So $10 million worth of investment.
Actually, I think it's actually closer to $10 million when all said and done.
Okay. And prior to that though, prior to the American Rescue Funds, by legislation, counties could not be involved in, in paying for, if we had desire to do so, for cable to be extended to different areas that were unserved, right?
Absolutely. So the General Assembly had to pass a law change to allow counties to spend any sort of money, even grant money, directly on broadband. And so that happened a couple of years ago, so now you can use this funding for that purpose.
Well, I know, I was at the convenience center Saturday and, and the guy came up behind me and, and he was so thrilled, he lived in an area that had not had broadband and he would, he said that they'd been up there, they installed and, and he's got it now and it's running great and he was so commenting about the, how quick it is and how fast it is. And so this CAB is going to try to complete areas that are still not served, is that correct?
As many as possible.
As many as possible.
I'll say it's unlikely, I think we had about 2,700 that are counted as unserved after all the grant. Probably not going to serve all of those, but it'll hopefully serve a big number. And then again, there's more funding and other programs to come and that's where we are being aggressive and looking for those. I'll mention too, we don't typically refer to citizen comment directly, but you did have a comment raised at a recent meeting by a resident, won't get into details of that, but I did take that concern to the state, to this office, and that state office said, this is why we exist. You know, any more that you have, send them to us. We were, you've got bigger fish to fry in the county, we can call the people and I think we're seeing movement in that one you heard about recently. So that doesn't mean it'll happen in every situation, but it is good to know that there's out there to help.
And so when the CAB program's completed, any resident in McDowell County who does not have the internet broadband to their residents, will still petition and apply for grant funding.
That's right.
And whatever we can to assist them, is that correct?
The, the next acronym is BEED and it's Broadband Equity Access Development, I think, but it's another federal program that's coming down the pipe.
Because in our society, where we're living today and time we live in now, you've got to have power and water as a requirement and necessity, but you might as well just take broadband and put it up there equal to power, to water, you, everything's done right in, right in there and you've got to have access to it. Okay. One great update. Let's move to item C under old business, this is building updates. Mr. Wooton, go ahead, sir.
Thank you. There's a couple more this month than I've had maybe in a while. Just again, another update on the DSS building, you've identified that as your, your top need and prior direction was to have some schematics done for the staffing needs for the next several decades and as well as a cost estimate in order to provide that to your legislative delegation. That was done, I think I reported last month, had been done by that meeting. And so it is a short session. And so it is a short session, is in right now. And so everyone acknowledged that they've received that, but again, leave it in their hands for this point. The next item, also great importance, we've talked about quite a bit, is the transfer station. And sometimes I'll say transfer station, and I mean the actual sheltered facility at the top of the hill, as people might refer to it. Sometimes I might mean the entire complex, which is, you know, 20 or 30 acres. I'm talking a little bit about the entire complex right now. Talk first about scales. You authorized staff to get pricing on truck scales a couple of months ago. Right now, we have one set of scales. And so as folks come in, especially on a Saturday, it can be very, very backed up, a lot of traffic. Because passenger vehicle, large truck, whatever it might be, comes in, they weigh. Sometimes they may have to pay if it's a non-commercial, and that can take time, of course, to get out and go talk to the staff. And that can be problematic when you only have one set. So you've got traffic coming and going on that one. And so we talked about having a second set. So you would have an in-scale and an out-scale. And in between, we would have our building. And so someone coming in, you get the tear weight, as it's called. They go up, dump their load, and then as they come out is where you get the final weight, and you subtract the difference, and that's when they would pay.
Will there be two people working in that building then, at that time?
Our goal is to be able to do that with one person.
Should be able to do it. Will there be calibration between the two scales so that there won't be a variance?
Yes, sir. That's right. And so that is inspected to make sure it is calibrated.
On a daily basis, just to make sure everything's good.
And so we did receive proposals. The proposal we have before you tonight is the same type scale as the one we have now. And I had hoped to be able to present a financing for this, but since we're doing a little bit more of what I would call a facility enhancement, kind of moves it out of the equipment and more into physical improvement, which we cannot finance without LGC approval. So I'm asking, so the costs to do the scales and the associated improvements, which is there's some foundational work that would happen on the existing set of scales, which would make those function even better than they are now, and a little bit easier to clean, most importantly, and then prepare the foundation for the second set. And there are a few enhancements with like a traffic light. I mean, that sounds like it's something superfluous, but when you have a Saturday, you need some help. And so, and a display sign. And so the total for that, as you see in your packet, is a little over $123,000. And we would recommend using ARPA interest that has been generated off of our ARPA funding that we still have. Did get a total earlier before the meeting. If you approved this purchase out of that interest, there would still be about $140,000 in that fund after the purchase.
Slightly less than $124,000, being all the issues you just mentioned, improving the old scale, getting the light, doing a foundation for the new scale, that would be the $124,000, slightly less.
Yes, sir.
Can I make a motion to accept it as presented, using ARPA funds? Second.
Okay, now, discussion, real quick, Ashley. Breakdown, just let me know. So I understand everything you said, it's good information. What's the price of just the scale? I understand all the prep work. What's that breakdown from the actual scale to the prep work?
The scales themselves, $62,710. The guide rails, which essentially go onto it, are $55. The foundation work is $23,500. The printer, so the Avery Waytronics is a computer program, it's about $4,000. And so installation is $5. Then there's about $15,000 of additional concrete that will be where the scale house, this is again where you kind of get into, it's not just equipment, where the scale house will be moved to set in between, essentially as a foundation.
Set a firm, set a firm price.
Yes.
Local guys in the work?
Quote expires May 31st.
It's not a local company. This is a scale vendor.
It's a specialty, I mean.
It is a specialty. I'm not sure if they're...
The price sounds reasonable.
Okay, you have comments, questions? There being in all favor say aye. I have a move like aye.
And I'll talk quickly about the facility itself, up on the hill, the building. We've talked about making state mandated repairs to that facility. I've communicated back and forth with the engineer. We've met in person several times. Those plans are pretty much ready to go. I'll start talking probably more and more about that because, again, it's an older facility. It has a lot of wear and tear on it because of all the machinery and the trucks going in. And so it has to be repaired on a pretty massive scale. We've, since it's been there in 30 years, we've had times of repair, but not at this level. And so essentially what needs to happen and will happen is the entire floor is not going to be taken out, but a lot of it will be milled down. Some rebar might need to be repaired, but essentially the entire surface is going to be repoured. The sidewalls will be milled down and repaired. And if you've been there where the trailers are, when it was built, there was a ledge hanging over the trailers. With the idea of the waste is pushed off in the trailer, it just falls off the side. Well, with the machines that we've been using, that ledge is gone, and so that ledge has to be rebuilt, so the waste doesn't get between the facility and the trailer. That's a, it's a very massive and intensive repair. So that facility, that sheltered facility will have to close for perhaps several months. In preparation for that, we're going to build essentially what will turn into a temporary tipping floor. So right beside the existing facility, the floor, we're going to build one approximately the same size. It will not have a shelter on it, but it'll almost approximately be the same size. That will operate during that closure of the main, the original facility. And after the original facility is rehabbed, we'll be able to use that other floor for other purposes, recycling or something else. But that's a very disruptive project, even with having a temporary floor. There's going to be activity going on, so it'll require a lot of coordination with our frequent customers, our infrequent ones, as well as our staff. So we'd like to have the scale project done, hopefully before that starts, so we can approve the traffic flow before we start disrupting the transfer station.
We will refer to that as Phase Two of the project.
I would say so, yes, sir.
One other thing that I would like to, with the blessings of the board, get you to do is get a price on paving a drive up to the top for the small vehicles to travel back and forth. And of course, the big trucks, you know, they wouldn't be allowed to use that. And the gravel and the ground is fine for them, because whatever they travel on, based on the weight that they have, they're going to carry it up anyway. I'd like to suggest you get a price on paving that up to the top for the smaller vehicles.
And I have had the conversation with Mr. Riddle about that, because I know that's something you've expressed before. We haven't brought our engineer in to look at it yet, but, so we're trying to find, well, we will. We've not found like a good routing yet, but that's why we pay people like engineers to find something, because...
I was going to say the same thing. If we looked at, because that's a complaint I get all the time, is the road from scale to the top.
I mentioned this some time back.
You did.
And I don't know if you ever followed up on it.
We have been.
We did have citizen comment on the, on the, a few Saturdays where it's been excessive at the scale house. And it was, this is going to be addressing those issues as well, so, but I'm in agreement. I've had more complaints about cars and light trucks driving up and having the large...
I think by consensus with the board, just...
Yes, sir.
And report back within 60 days.
We'll continue the conversation, because we've spoken about that with our engineer, and I think it's one of those, we've not found a good solution yet, but we'll make sure they sharpen the pencils on it. And in the grander scale, and I'll move on, last year, we did speak with and apply for an Environmental Protection Agency grant that would do quite a bit of work at that entire facility. As you know, we did not get the grant. I have had several conversations with our federal representatives if that grant came back up, or there's other opportunities. And so I have submitted your interest in having federal assistance, and I would like to have the board, I guess, reiterate that through a vote, to support seeking federal funds.
Motion for?
So move.
All favor say aye. I have a move like aye.
Thank you, and I'll communicate that. I'll move on. The 911 Center, this isn't a project we've talked a lot about lately. It has been brought up in the, probably several years ago. It's just what I might call is planting a seed, something to be thinking about. Just quickly, our current 911 center was consolidated about 10 years ago or so. Used to have dispatch in the old EMS station on Garden Street. You had the police department doing dispatch, and you had the sheriff's office doing dispatch on Spalding Road. Long story short, that was all consolidated in the one facility in the lower level of the Marion Police Department. That was a cooperative partnership that started then and still exists now. What we've seen is the call volume increase quite a bit.
Back up real quick, important note, I think, is this, when that partnership began, the city paid for exponential positions, and with all change, they paid for none of those, is that correct? That's totally county?
That's right. It's all county funding now. And so they've been what I call a great landlord since, but the call volume has increased to the point where, you know, they have at least four seats occupied, and many of you saw that recently. You have no space for any future growth. You have no space, a lot of times, for administrative staff. It's very tight. The room is, which is essentially one room that they're in, it's not really suitable for long-term purposes. And so there has been some discussion about, again, with the board previously and with staff about thinking and looking for, you know, long-term needs. Much like the last item, I think it's worth our while to pursue federal funding on this. Federal priorities tend to line up with law enforcement and public safety. And so if you would please endorse that request.
Do I hear a motion that we request from the federal government, $6 million, what's it going to cost to build here? We'll leave the dollar right out.
One other thing I'd like to add to that, in going out there and looking at it, I think as most of us have, but they're basically in a dungeon, and, you know, they've had a problem with water coming in, and we've been lucky that, you know, there's some high-dollar equipment sitting in there that could be damaged from that. It's a need that we have, by all means.
Can you, can we find out what the square footage is, and then what the square footage needs to be?
Yeah.
In asking staff to do this?
Absolutely.
Did you make that as a motion?
I did.
And I second it.
Okay, discussion. All favor say aye. I have a move like aye. Okay.
Last two items, you held a formal groundbreaking for the recreation center project this past week. Again, about six more months of that project. So again, no pool, definitely this summer, it's not there anymore. But next summer, that will be open as, and before then, the new driveway and parking will be in place, should be for this basketball season. Look forward to that. And lastly, under the building projects, we've talked again, maybe medium term, if not long term, about an animal shelter replacement. You had pointed us at the, a site adjacent to the Saddle and Bridle Club on 226 South. And so we've, we've had several studies of that one site that's right off the highway. There's been a floodplain study, a wetland study, and most recently, a geotechnical study. The first two were marginal, essentially saying that not all of the property that's there that could be used due to limitations for wetlands and flooding. But the third one, geotechnical, the takeaway without having you read a 40-page report is the soil that's on the surface, which is very common in most building projects, is not suitable for building. You'd have to remove several feet of soil and bring in new, not entirely uncommon, especially around here. But below that soil, the groundwater level is very high. They were hitting it about two and a half feet, pretty much across the whole site. It could be built upon. They're doing at least one more study. I think they were out there today at their own cost. But it might not be suitable, perhaps. And so he's doing a final report, but I just want to let you know, might be prudent to be thinking about something else.
Mr. Wooten, I think it'd be great if you could provide to the board by next meeting, suitable sites, because it sounds like that sites aren't going to be usable for the purpose intended, and report back to the board.
Yes, sir.
Because we do have private donors whose money will not remain indefinitely, that we need to go ahead and utilize their private funding to help offset the cost of this building.
That's right.
Okay.
One thing I'd like to say in, you know, regard to those listening tonight is, you know, there's always question about money that's spent by the county, and there's always the thought from some individuals that there's a lot of wasteful spending. But we try very hard to direct the money that we spend in the areas that we feel like the public needs, the citizens of the county need. And, you know, there's different people that are into different things. You know, you've got people that love recreation. You've got people likes the trails. You've got people that love animals. You've got people that concerned about childcare, senior citizens, DSS. You've got people that want business. So we have to represent each and every one of these people. And so it's not about just picking and choosing what we would rather do. We try to represent everybody and everybody's needs.
Very good point. Very good point. Okay, Mr. Wooten?
Thank you. That's all I had under building update.
Okay, so the new business item A, this is the Charlotte Interbasin Transfer Request. I will say before you begin, Mr. Wooten, I appreciate the board meeting for the special call meeting to discuss this, and appreciate the strong support among the board to utterly request this be not granted. 33 million gallons a day of our water basin, when they've got one of the biggest lakes around, Lake Norman, I don't know, I think Lake Norman might be...
Lake Hickory, Lake Hickory, Lake Norman.
They've got plenty of water sources downstream, draw from it.
Roadhead down that way, they've got high rock down that way. There's just tons of lakes down there.
Yeah.
And they're standing closer than what we are.
So I'll mention again, you did meet last week, and you passed resolutions in your packet. Won't dwell on it, but there was a meeting last Wednesday night in Hickory. It's been reported on the Hickory Daily Record, and McDowell News picked up that article.
And we do, I do want to say not to interrupt, but we appreciate Mr. Conley being here to cover that.
Yes, sir. It was alluded to in the article, and if you saw any of the pictures, it was standing room only. A lot of negative comments about the venue, if nothing else, about it being inappropriate for the size crowd that was there. But the meeting was an opportunity for Charlotte Water, which is part of the City of Charlotte Government, to talk about the request that they have pending before the Environmental Management Commission. And as you talked about, they currently have permission from the state to move water from the Catawba Basin to the Yadkin Basin. And so Mecklenburg County... And so, Mecklenburg County, like McDowell and many other counties, has the geographic feature of being in two different river basins. And so, this instance, they're wanting to move water from the Catawba side of Mecklenburg County to the Yadkin side of the county, and a large amount of water, as was said, over 30 million gallons per day. And so, the meeting Wednesday was the first, and four or five meetings that'll be scheduled. They did indicate there will be another one in Hickory since that one was so well-attended. But a lot of negative comments about the request, as you can imagine, no positive other than from Charlotte Water. I did reiterate to the Charlotte representatives that you have passed a resolution in opposition, and so they will receive a letter from the county as well as a resolution for the written comments. I will mention quickly that the city has passed a resolution, same type resolution. The town has the same type resolution. I understand that will be presented very soon, if not tonight. We will be involved sort of the end with this, whatever the end looks like. Going to a meeting Friday with managers in that region to make sure we're at the table. And so, this will probably be a feature on your agenda for many, many months to come.
I had a guy who owns a sizable company, talking to him the other night, he lives around Lake Norman. He said that he is definitely against the IBT happening. He lives in that basin. He said he's tired of all the subdivisions, just they keep popping up everywhere down there where he lives at, and for that reason, he said the HIPS is defeated and not approved by the environmental water commission.
Well, with all the building and construction and new homes that are going up in our mountains around here, they're slowly depleting the water resources that we have by tapping into them with whales and such.
Okay, let's move to item B, under new business. This is the school resolutions, and Mr. Wooten, go ahead, sir.
Thank you. You have two resolutions. One is a request from the Board of Education to endorse either a statewide pre-K ADM allotment for every school system. If not that, allowing for essentially a pilot program for pre-K in this county to continue what they've started over the last couple of years.
Motion to the doors.
Second. Discussion, on favor say aye. Okay, great. Good item C, littering discussion, Mr. Wooten.
I'm sorry, there's one more resolution under school resolutions for...
Oh, I thought you had both of them.
He didn't, he didn't read.
I ain't got to that one yet, but maybe just quickly.
I don't know what it is.
On Friday, the 24th, you've been invited, as you know, to your recognition of Dr. Gorst, who was the principal of Eastfield Elementary, and so this would approve it for that date.
I amend the, I amend the request to include this as well. Dr. Gorst.
Second.
All right, discussion, on favor say aye. I oppose last time. Okay, let's move to item C, littering discussion.
Thank you. Quickly, last month, Vice Chairman Brown asked that we have a discussion of this tonight about having discussion about maybe Littering Task Force or something along those lines. And I laid out a brief list. I did not put commissioner, and that was just to be understood, I guess, but in addition to a commissioner representative, as far as internal departments, the suggestion was to have somebody from our waste department, Matt from Keep McDowell Beautiful, the sheriff's office, and our planning department, as far as internal folks. And if you'd like to schedule a meeting starting there, and if you'd like to broaden it...
I like what you got.
I like what you got, and then the, that group can suggest if they want to add more people or more businesses.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd just like to be close informed on what...
You could be on that committee.
I would, I would like to be on that committee.
Yes, sir.
I make a motion that Chairman, Vice Chairman Brown is on that committee.
Second.
Discussion, on favor say aye. I oppose last time. All right, let's go ahead and move to item D. This is the budget updates. Where is this, Mr. Wooten?
Thank you. No amendments to present this week of the existing budget, but you do have your property tax collection report and your sales tax report. I will mention for the FY '25 budget, Ms. Bell and I are getting close to the end on preparing a recommendation. There is a change in your memo about having a special meeting to present it. The request is to have that the morning of May 23rd, perhaps at 8:30, and not the option, if that's okay. And if you'd like to look at your calendars, we've got time if you want to get back.
Right, just...
Make a motion to approve the budgetizing as presented.
Okay. Second. Discussion, on favor say aye. I oppose last time. Okay, let's move to item E, administrative items, Mr. Wooten, go ahead, sir.
Just quickly, EMS write-offs. You have a financing for garbage truck, one Ram 1500 and two Equinox vehicles. These are vehicles that have been approved for purchase already. You have two reimbursement resolutions. One is for emergency services, and one is for public services, again, for vehicles. And then, Mr. Hollifield, our transit director, has asked for an update to your Title VII plan, which is pretty standard, but what is not standard is that he is asking for some local discretion to suspend passengers for no-shows of a certain amount, also limit the amount of trips for folks, and then if there's cancellations for, in a month, they will be penalized as well.
I'd like for him to bring back what he would like for us to, but don't bring some...
I have that in there, I'm sorry.
Oh, do you?
The memo, and I can read it more specifically, get down to it. So, item one, any passenger who's been suspended for two 30-day periods will, upon accumulating additional no-shows or other infractions that would normally result in a suspension, will then be suspended from McDowell Transit for a period of one year. Item two, no passenger may take more than three non-subscription or non-medical trips in a one-week period. And item three, any passenger who on the day of a scheduled trip cancels four trips in one month period will receive a no-show, even if the trip is canceled on time. These all sound very punitive.
That would be a policy change.
Yes, sir.
So, I move we accept the policy change requested in the resolution and the update of the Title VII.
And would you include in that all the admin items?
Yeah.
Okay. And then, I'll just mention, you've had this, just include the annual spending plan from JCPC.
Is this consistent, my question, in the transit aspect of it, is that consistent, what he's wanting to do on the no-shows for a year? That's a pretty stiff...
Well, you know, I think after three times someone calling for a pickup and don't show, you know, I think three times is certainly enough to justify a penalty.
Long enough period, I don't know.
You have the discretion to shorten that if you would like.
Do you want it longer or shorter?
Let's think about six minutes.
I was thinking three, a quarter. And that way, because these people, people are needing it, I would suggest either three months or six months.
Would you like to try three months?
I find that, I find that, we can always add to it if it doesn't work out.
If you made that as a motion, I'll make a second.
Yeah, yeah. I'll go ahead and...
Okay, second, discussion.
Add that to three months then.
All right, on favor say aye. I oppose last time. Okay?
And I'll say for the record, Mr. Hollifield is not a punitive person. The issue we have is that we have limited capacity, and when someone does no-show or cancel with no notice, we're taking away an opportunity for somebody else to ride, so... Thank you.
But I think provides me a valid reason why the, that's really a valid reason that should be listed, I think.
Sure.
All right, let's move to the next item. That would be our item F, board appointments.
I believe you have one action item that is the, JCPC has asked to approve their terms of their appointment on page 97.
Okay, which was your board?
Motion to approve.
Motion of second.
Second.
Discussion, on favor say aye. I oppose last time. Okay, let's go to tax matters, item G, under new business.
You've got a little bit more than usual in this. Do you have a couple refunds ordered by the Property Tax Commission and rebills, but otherwise, they're fairly typical.
Motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Discussion, on favor say aye. I oppose last time. Okay, at this point, let's move to item, well, is this a comment? Mr. Coast, if anybody's signed up, speak. Do we have anybody else signed up, speak? Okay, there being none, let's go to our commissioners and staff reports. Are there any, is there anything, Mr. Wooten, you have or commissioners?
Not at this time.
There being none, at this time, we will go ahead and have a closed session pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11A6.
Eight three.
Two three.
Eight three. Okay, very much to go in the public.
So, move.
Second.
All right, on favor say aye. We're in closed session now.
Are we open? Are we ready?
I'll...
Make a recommendation, come out to closed session.
Okay.
Second.
Discussion, on favor say aye.
Ashley, you're going to check the door.
Yes, sir.
Let's get a motion adjourned real quick, guys.
I will, we will. Better not vote till he opens the door.
Motion to...
You made the motion, I'll make a second on the closing.
Yep.
Any discussion?
Motion to adjourn.
All right, second.
Second.
Discussion, on favor say aye. I oppose last time. Meeting is adjourned.